We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 20th, 2024. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Platsner, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Noe.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey, to adopt the agenda. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda's adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our... I guess we don't have any minutes.
Yeah, we do.
It's just not on the...
Yeah, it's just not on the agenda.
May 16th.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Approval of the minutes of our May 16th, 2024 meeting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I move that we approve the minutes from May 16th. Minutes.
I would second it.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Noe. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are adopted. First order of business this evening is planning cases 24-14 and 24-15, the site plan and preliminary plat for Coon Rapids Town Homes at 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sons Architecture LLC. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So with this first item, and you're going to see this again tonight, we, the staff, are going to request that the, or recommend that the Planning Commission table the item until the July 18th meeting. So the site plan and preliminary plat for the Coon Rapids Town Homes, the Planning Commission making a recommendation on this is dependent on whether or not the City Council approves the rezoning request. So the City Council has tabled the item to approve the rezoning, approve or deny the rezoning request. And so Planning Commission cannot make a recommendation based on the MDR zoning that the applicant is requesting until the City Council gives a yea or nay on whether that zoning will actually go through. So what I intend to do is go over the item very briefly tonight. We did send out notices for public hearing, so I would request that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, and we will take any public comments into record and not close the public hearing. The strategy is to keep the public hearing open until the July 18th meeting, at which time there will be time for public comment again. So that way, the public hearing was correctly noticed for the June 20th meeting. We'll keep all of the comments from the June 20th meeting on record, and I'll summarize them at the July 18th meeting where we will hear any other comments. At that time, I plan to go over the item in more detail, and hopefully the City Council will have made a decision on the rezoning. In that time, the Planning Commission will be able to make a recommendation of approval or denial for both the site plan and the preliminary plat. So I understand this is kind of complicated, and I'm just going to go over it really quickly, and then I'll be open for questions about the process. And this is kind of unusual, and it's definitely unusual that it'll be happening twice in one night, but hopefully it'll start to make sense. So you guys have kind of heard about this one already. This is a request for a site plan and a preliminary plat on a parcel at the intersection of Butternut Street and University Avenue, just south of Peace Lutheran Church. The applicant is proposing to meet the MDR zoning standards, so they have requested a rezoning from office to MDR, and they've submitted a site plan and a preliminary plat for 34 townhome units. The staff have been working very closely with the applicant to make sure that what they're proposing does meet the MDR zoning requirements. So the likely conclusion that staff will provide to the Planning Commission in July when the item, when I go over the item in detail, is that most or all of the requirements of the MDR zoning district are met. And notably, the applicant had reworked the site plan multiple times to meet the public and private open space, total lot coverage requirements in the MDR zoning district, as well as the parking requirements. There are some engineering comments on grading and drainage, so any future approval will be contingent on meeting those requirements. So we did talk about this a little bit, and it is difficult to see up there, but this is what the site plan would look like with six different...
Excuse me, Mr. Platsner.
Absolutely.
Our screens have gone and gone out.
Oh, no.
I don't know if you need to do something, or if Steve needs to do something.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So six, six different buildings, five of which will have six different townhomes, and one has four townhomes. Parking will be two garage spaces per unit, as well as, I believe it's 17 guest parking spaces on top of that. And that does meet the 2.5 parking spaces per unit requirement in the MDR district. The applicant did submit façades and renderings of what the townhomes would eventually look like, and these do meet the city requirements in MDR for articulated building, massing, variation in roofs, roof shape, variation in materials, as well as providing those garage parking spaces at the bottom and on the back of the units. So here's a rendering of sort of what the units would likely look like, and those different colors represent different materials that are being used on the facade. And that's something that I intend to go into in more detail in July, should the rezoning be approved by the City Council. So staff did receive quite a few public comments prior to the meeting. Almost all of the comments came down to traffic concerns, which were brought up to the Planning Commission at the public hearing for the rezoning. So we got more comments from, from neighbors about traffic concerns, notably, kids use the street to walk to the park into Eisenhower Elementary. It's dangerous because there are no sidewalks, so kids do walk in the street, and vehicle traffic is already very fast down Butternut. So staff are working with the applicant and with the county to try and find other options for access to the site. Some of these options would require a revision of the site plan, and at which time, the site plan application would likely need to be withdrawn and then resubmitted with revisions. If the site plan is not withdrawn and resubmitted, or basically doesn't end up needing to undergo redesign, then the request for recommendation at the July meeting will go forward. So I'm not going to go over that right now, because I don't think it's absolutely necessary. But with that, the city staff do recommend tabling both the proposed site plan and tabling the preliminary plat after opening the public hearing for each of those items, and, and then we would request that the public hearing be left open. So that's all I have, and I'm open to questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. If we were to go with the recommendation and continue these to the next month, will the public be re...
Renotified?
Renotified? Or not?
There's no requirement to send out notices again. It would be the same public hearing essentially being continued. On request, I think staff could consider sending out notices again, but it's unlike sending out notices for the first public hearing, or essentially for the, the beginning of the public hearing, notices would not be required for a second one.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear to the public here, that they may not receive another notification.
Correct.
All right, Commissioner, any questions? Mr. Platsner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, Mr. Platsner, just to reiterate succinctly, staff is requesting we table this because City Council has not decided on the rezoning.
Correct.
The decision on the rezoning, if they choose not to, would then, it would be a moot point to review a site plan that doesn't meet the office zoning as it stands.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? All right, and Mr. Bouchacouney, I can open board. Public hearings at the same time?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And then, I think procedurally, you could handle it any number of ways. It's up to the Commission here. If you're going to continue the public hearing to a different date, you could take comment today, or you could take comments at the next meeting, or you could do both.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I will open public hearings for planning cases 24-14 and 24-15, both the site plan and preliminary plat for 10701 Butternut Street Northwest. Since you're here, I'll give anyone, if they wish to speak tonight, an opportunity, knowing that we don't have any really more information to answer any questions or considerations. Best to do is to wait until next month after a presentation is made complete, if the zoning goes through. But it's up to you, if you're here and you wish to speak. Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wish to speak? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Betty Nato, and my address is 11621 Olive Street Northwest. Thank you for allowing time to speak. I know that zoning hasn't been decided on this, but I did want to put into record that I'm hoping that the City Council considers rezoning this property. My understanding is that it's going to be developed regardless, and I did see the comments that were made about traffic, and I do understand that, but to have something be built commercial or industrial will bring a lot more traffic than a residential area. And I reviewed the plans, and I'm really delighted to see three-bedroom townhomes with double-car garages. I think it gives families another option, who maybe don't want to live in single-family homes, don't want to maintain an exterior property, another option to raise their children in our community, and that is a really exciting prospect. So I'm hoping that people support this project, and I look forward to seeing what happens at the City Council meeting around zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public hearing? Come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
My name is James Johorek. I live at 155108th Avenue Northwest. I got a couple of points to make. I didn't see anything on what type of rental, these are going to be rentals from, I understand.
Well, from the information, we don't have much information, so we can't answer...
So you guys are in the dark with this, too?
At this point.
Okay. My concern is if you go to like a low income or a Section 8, you're going to have, our values in the neighborhood are going to go down. I'm going to give you a little history. I worked for Exo Energy for 16 years. I did credit collections, which is door-to-door, collecting on delinquent bills. And I've seen these type of developments, say like in Woodbury, where they come in and they're brand new, inside of four years, they're demolished. It looks, there's trash on the ground, they're not well-kept up. And then, what happens is, it seems like the crime rate goes up in the area, it spills over into the neighborhood. The other point, the other concern I was having is the traffic. I sat out in my front yard, I live on 108th, which is the main road in and out, and inside of two hours, I had 65 cars go by from 2:00 until, let's see, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And, and that's not even, that's just the beginning of rush hour, because then more traffic comes through there from 4:00 to 6:00. But I only did it for one day, and I did it for two hours, and I figured, well, it's a start, but you're going to get a lot more traffic through there. There's no other way to egress that, especially with the way the plot's set up. It looks like you can't come through the parking lot or by cross, or by Peace Lutheran. So everything's going to have to come in through our neighborhood. And right now, we have a lot of traffic that comes through because they're trying to get by that intersection there so they can get on Northdale. So my, my concern is we're going to have a lot more traffic. And our neighborhood is turning over, and we're getting a lot more children in the neighborhood, and they're playing in the streets, they're walking around, and I'd hate to see that road become a main through fare, just to get to those townhomes. And if you're going to put 34 units in there, most people have two cars, and now you've got 70 more, and, and you're going to have even more traffic than that coming through there. So I'm really concerned about that. I'd hate to see our neighborhood become like, or at least my road, become a freeway, an access point to come to these townhomes in and out. Like I said, we have a lot of traffic there already, so. So I'm, I'm concerned about the financial, my finances of the neighborhood. I don't want my home value to go down, and I, and our neighborhood is great right now. We have a little pocket where we're at, where for whatever reason, we don't have that much crime there. And I'm concerned that if you add rentals to the area, crime rate's going to go up. So that's my only points I have.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Last month when I spoke, I talked about the issues. As a nurse working in three different counties, I see these new developments go up, and they turn to trash. None of you folks can guarantee us that they won't be rental, and we work hard for the equity in our homes to keep it. Already, the townhomes that's north of SA there, Speedway now, on 109th, has already had a gunshot, shooting there. And I think you all should be for us in the community, not for a developer and their profit and gain. It is not true that if that stays commercial, that you will have issues with traffic, because you will not have a big restaurant in that area. You just won't have huge commercial company. And most companies are not 24/7 traffic that you will see in those townhomes. People work in all different shifts, two-car garages. I know these townhomes will have five or six people, should they go to Section 8, sometimes even 10 living in each of them. We're going to have parking on the street all the time. We already have speeding down University Avenue in that area at 1:00 in the morning. How many teenage kids in those townhouses do you think are going to join in that? I would say keep it commercial. I, like I said, I don't, if we had to, which it already is, I don't see any big companies that's going to make it a big traffic issue as what townhomes will be. I don't see 17 visitor spots, so we're going to have a lot of parking on the streets. We might lose parking on one side of our streets with no parking on that side of the street on Butternut, because it's too narrow to be having a development like that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Julian Klein, and I am from 1330 118th Avenue Northwest, almost my whole life. Our property is on the north side of the creek. We are across from the furthest west position of the land in question. I'm here tonight because I think the townhomes will have a negative impact on the city of Coon Rapids in general, and the ecosystem of this section of the creek specifically. I have two big areas of concern regarding the proposed development that I would like the Planning Committee, Committee, to consider. I believe both affect the quality of life for the citizens of Coon Rapids, which of course reflects on our town as a desirable place to live. If these townhomes are built, the first area of concern is the impact on the users of the popular public walkway, which is adjacent to the creek on the north side. As I'm sure the Planning Committee knows, the experience of using the expansive walkway system in Coon Rapids is unique, admired, and should be protected. These walkways make Coon Rapids more desirable to live in. For that reason, the impact of these townhomes on the users of the walkways should be considered. Townhomes along the south side of this creek will dramatically impact the experience of using this path.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
You're talking about a creek. There's no creek at this property. Are you here for the second?
Oh, am I?
You're here for...
That would be really embarrassing, but...
Hidden Creek.
Thank you.
That's the next case.
Mr. Commissioner, if I may, that, it sounds like you're talking about the Zeon Street proposal. That's the next item.
I will save it, but thank you very much for listening, then.
Anyone, anyone else wish to speak at this public hearing?
My name is Alan Geener, and I live at 10867 Butternut Street. I was here on the first meeting with you guys, and I went through the whole thing. But I had a neighbor approach me saying he could not be at the meeting that was supposed to be tonight, and he had requested that I read his statement. Hello, my name is Ken Tome, 10925 Butternut Street. I have lived on Butternut Street since 1980. I'm writing about my concern for this housing project. My four kids walked to school all the time in Butternut, and this street was busy back then. During the day, adults are out walking. One bad thing about Butternut Street is that there is a hill in the street at about 10913th Street. Many times, I've been backing out of my driveway and unable to see cars coming because of this hill. It's, it's a sweeping upward curve at this guy's driveway. My point is, drivers coming from the south to that hill cannot see clearly what is ahead of them, kids on the street or people walking. There is a group home at 10913 Butternut Street, which has cars parked on both sides, four at a time. Also, the cars coming from Ygritte Boulevard to 108th and down Butternut to get to Northdale, avoiding the lights on University Avenue. If this project is approved, I hope something is done to keep Butternut Street safe for everyone living here. And I just want to add, I was trying to read through some of the notes from the planner, where it was stated, and I couldn't pull it up on my phone, and I didn't have a printer to be able to print it out, but one of the statements that caught my eye was that the development would not incur a significant increase in the traffic rate. And right away, it jumped to my head as to, what's the criteria for identifying what is an acceptable current traffic rate? What is not significant increase? How are those things determined? Has it been a traffic count? Are there parameters based on the size of the street? You know, all of that kind of good stuff. Is that something that could be answered at some point?
Mr. Commissioner, if I may, I will try to provide a detailed answer to that question at the July 18th meeting. I'm, I'm not prepared to go into detail on that at this time, but I, I will, I think it's a valid question, and I'll try to include that in the presentation at the following meeting.
Can I respond to him? Or just, I want to make sure...
There's no back and forth here, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public hearing this evening?
Andrea Bulima, 7008th Avenue, Coon Rapids. Just a couple words. Last time I was here, a month ago, I was asking if you could do low-density, single-family. Why high-density? I love low-density. It's the quality of life, quality of neighborhood, and I think it would be better for city of Coon Rapids. If we have 10-15 housing units on this three-acre lot, I believe, is it three acre? I guess. So I'm for low-density, or just keep it commercial, office space, you know, it's quiet, it's good, you know, not much traffic for office. It closes 7, 8 o'clock. So I prefer low-density, if I may say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at public hearing this evening? All right, Commissioner, need a motion to continue the public hearings to the January, or the July 18th meeting?
Is there... Mr. Chair.
Motion. Chris Nord Casey.
I will make a motion to keep the public hearing for the preliminary plat and the public hearing for the site plan in planning cases 2414 and 2415 open as, as of this point till the July 18th meeting date.
And continue the entire case to that point?
Correct. Make that part of the motion.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Heikala. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this case is continued. All right, our next case is planning case 24-16 and 24-17, preliminary plat and site plan for Hidden Creek Woods, second edition, 1210 117th Lane Northwest, SPL Holdings LLC. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So we have a similar process on our hands for this one, but for different reasons. So this is a request for a 20-unit townhome development on Zeon Boulevard along Sand Creek, so it's going to be to the south of Sand Creek. They're requesting a preliminary plat and site plan. This is a site that's zoned, moderate-density residential. It's surrounded by high-density residential on two sides, and then preserve or, or parkland on some of its other sides. So it does butt up right against Sand Creek and a natural area there. The land use is also, or sorry, the land use is, is high-density residential for this. However, the zoning is MDR, so they would not be requesting a rezoning. They would be looking to build to moderate-density residential standards. Staff have been working closely with the applicant to bring what's being proposed into compliance with moderate-density residential. The initial application was, was pretty far out of compliance, but it, they've gotten a lot closer. However, they're requesting, they were, they requested for staff to recommend tabling the item because there is going to be a delay in solving one of the issues with site, and they chose not to withdraw the application, but to allow staff to extend the review period to 120 days, and request that the item be tabled until the July 18th meeting. And this is due to FEMA floodways on the property. And I'll do, again, similar to the university townhome item, I'm going to just briefly do an overview of what's being proposed, and I'll go into detail should the item be ready for the July 18th Planning Commission meeting. So it's a 20-unit townhome development that they're proposing. They're planning to request two variances for setbacks of drivelanes from lotlines, so no structure setbacks, but just setbacks for the drivelanes. And the reason for their variance request is because of some of the difficulties on the north edge of the site near Sand Creek, so they wanted to move the site plan closer to Zeon Boulevard and encroaching some of those setbacks. They are currently working on requesting a variance from the Coon Creek Watershed District to encroach into a 100-foot easement that the Watershed District has around Sand Creek. So some of the building pads would be encroaching into that easement. So some of the building pads would be encroaching into that easement. Watershed District staff are likely to recommend approval of this variance, so they are working with the Watershed to get through their process. The Watershed is also requiring new wetland delineations, which is another item that is slowing the project down. And by new wetland delineations, the reasoning for that is that the initial site plan was drawn up back in 2019. The applicant brought forward a site plan that was drawn up in 2019 that was based on wetland locations back in 2019. Since those are five years old now, new delineations have been drawn up. Building pads also encroach into a FEMA floodway. There's no way around this. The city cannot recommend, or city staff cannot recommend approval of a, any sort of change, grading, building in a FEMA floodway. And this is different than a floodplain, or I guess a floodway is a part of a floodplain, but the floodway specifically can't be built in or altered. In order to change that, they would need to update their site plan to no longer be within the floodway, or request FEMA to redraw the floodway lines. Our city engineer does believe that the floodway lines shown on the FEMA map might be out of date, and there is a chance that those could be redrawn, which would then bring the proposal into compliance with the floodway requirement. However, it's going to take some back and forth with the applicant and FEMA in order to do that, which is another reason for the delay. Just a very brief overview, what they're proposing is three buildings, two eight-unit back-to-back townhome buildings, and one four-unit building all in a row. Drivelanes all around the buildings, parking in garages within each unit, as well as in driveways, and then guest parking along the drivelanes. They're looking to install stormwater ponds on the west side and northwest side of the sites to help mitigate the impacts of building near a FEMA flood zone, and this is required. So this map does show the FEMA floodways. That's the red-hatched area, if you can see it. It's a very odd-looking dashed line, and the red-hatched area inside of it extends into the proposed building site. So that's the line that the applicant is hoping to get redrawn, and there is a chance that that might occur. Okay, so I did receive some public comments in emails before this meeting, and I just wanted to summarize them. Most of the comments were based around the natural area and the recreational area that is Sand Creek. So this would be along the south side of Sand Creek, and some residents expressed concern to me that building this townhome, or this townhome development would destroy some of the recreational natural area, the natural beauty, as well as animal habitat along Sand Creek. And I did receive, I think, two or three comments along these lines. So with that, the city staff are recommending tabling this item as well. Because the public hearing was noticed, and this was done before, we were aware of the FEMA flood issue, staff is requesting the public hearing be opened and continued, similar to the last item, and then hopefully this will be heard, or presented and then heard again at the July 18th meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plaister. Is July 18th going to be enough time for the petitioners to get a response back from FEMA?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant seems to think so.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Plaister?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Plaister, as far as the applicant's desire to table and continue this forward, did they give any further reasoning other than they just think they can get it all done? Or was there, was there a little bit more to their method here?
Thank you, Commissioner. They were given the option to either withdraw the application and resubmit once all of this has been figured out, and they chose to request tabling the item until the next meeting instead. I wasn't given specific reasoning for that other than essentially confidence that the decision, or the issues would be able to be worked out before the July 18th meeting. It is a possibility that the applicant may still decide to withdraw if the delays are too long and they're not able to have that figured out by the July 18th meeting. So if that's the case, you know, we would just want to close the public hearing in July and consider the application withdrawn at that time.
Thank you.
I didn't get more reasoning than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Commission? All right, at this time, we'll open a public hearing for Planning Cases 24-16 and 24-17. Preliminary plaid and site plan for Hidden Creek Woods, second edition at 121-117th Lane Northwest, SPL Holdings LLC. Again, using the same criteria as the last case, the information we have is not very well-defined, so we won't be able to really answer much as far as comments or questions. If you wish to speak, you can. Otherwise, the public hearing will be continued to next month, and you are more than welcome to come and speak at that meeting after we receive full information. With that in mind, anyone wish to speak to this public hearing?
I want to apologize on my previous speech and hope that you listen to me just as well as the first time.
Please give your name and address again for the secretary, please.
My name is Julian Klein, and I live on 1330-118th Avenue Northwest. So I will restart. I've lived there my whole life. My property's on the north side of the creek, so I will not be impacted as much as some of the other areas, but I do really want to bring attention to the negative impact on the city and the ecosystem in general. As I'm sure the planning committee knows, the experience of using the walkway system in Coon Rapids is very unique, and I personally enjoy it very much. It makes it very desirable to live in, one of the reasons why I continue to live in Coon Rapids today. For that reason, the impact of these townhomes on the users of the walkways should be considered. Townhomes along the south side of this creek will dramatically impact the experience of using this path. Right now, entering that path from the east, which is Zeon Street North, the area feels like a nature preserve, and we should protect that impression. As you probably know, multiple studies have documented the importance of being in nature for mental health. And as I'm sure you also know, we are currently in a mental health crisis in our nation. Some people might argue that there will be a lot of nature still in this area even after the townhomes are built. However, according to the Mental Health Foundation in the UK, not every stretch of nature has the same positive impact. They cite a 2019 study that compared the impact of city nature to rural nature. According to an article published in a journal called Environment and Behavior, quote, "Researchers found that people reported more connection to nature and felt more restored after visiting rural and coastal locations than they did after spending time in urban green areas. Areas deemed to be high in environmental quality, such as nature reserves and protected habitats, were also more beneficial than areas with low biodiversity." Hopefully, you can see, well, that's not available, but I had two pictures I was hoping to present, but they were not taken here. But the new townhomes would be on the left side. The section of the path is unique in that you would, right now, you cannot see human dwellings very well on the south side of the creek at all. Many people benefit from this miniature nature preserve. The city's Parks and Rec Department took a survey in 2012 to see how many people were using this path. I'm not sure exactly where along the path this data was collected, but in 2012, a survey was done to count daily users. Couple of years ago, Greg Engel shared this data with me when I was doing a project. Greg said that 73 to 93 people a day used the path from April until June, and from July until September, 35 to 70 people a day. There's no data for October through March, but as a homeowner who can see the path from our kitchen window, we can assure you that people are still out there walking. And it's not the same people every day either. I would love to see updated numbers on the use of the path, as those numbers are not 12 years old. I think that they are making a new survey right now. Last time I went on the path, there was a survey. So that's hopeful for the future.
Your three minutes are up, so please wrap it up.
Well, I just want to thank you and hope that you would consider this.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak? All right, the plan is to continue the public hearing, and again, Mr. Plaister, they will or will not be re-noticed?
The plan is essentially not to send out a second round of notices.
So you will not receive notices again for next month's meeting? So it's incumbent upon yourselves to make note if you wish to be here for the public hearing. Commissioner, any plans to continue?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
I move that we continue the public hearing in Planning Case 24-16 and 24-17, as well as tabling both items.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Smokey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, and this case is continued. All right, our next case is Planning Case 24-12 and 24-13. Site plan and CUP for a new industrial building at 25, or excuse me, 9255 Holly Street Northwest. Mr. Plaister.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'll be doing this one. Kurt Behringer here, one of our new planners. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having us tonight. We are going to talk about, like you said, Planning Case 24-12 and 24-13. This is for a site plan and CUP at 9255 Holly Street, calling this Holly Street Industrial. So we'll first dive into our existing conditions here. We are at a 2.82 acre vacant lot. This is within our city's Port Evergreen and River Rapid Overlay District. Surrounding sites include some industrial and commercial properties. We do have an existing sidewalk kind of stubbed in there. This is the southwest corner of the lot, image on the left, and that, if we look to the south here of the subject lot, we do see that it continues to the west side of the Fresenius Clinic. So what's being proposed here is a just over 39,000 square foot warehouse office building. It will appear to be two stories from the outside, but will indeed, from the inside, be one large story for warehouse activities. They'll have access off of Holly Street with two driveways. The orientation of the building has the loading docks facing the street. The parking and main building entrance will be in the rear of the lot. That parking lot will include 58 parking spaces, which is, exceeds our 30 requirement for this type of development on this lot. Ponding to the north, and the site plan shows a 71% lot coverage, which is under our 80% max. And at this time, there are no tenants lined up, unless the applicant has any updates for us on that. Their landscape plan meets all of our city standards. It includes 50 trees and 135 shrubs, as well as adequate screening for that loading dock that's facing Holly. If we look at our elevation here, we can see that the building is over two stories high, includes two levels of windows, along with a cornice line to give the impression of a second story. They'll be using tip-up concrete panels, which will mimic the panels and the color of the new Fresenius Clinic that I'd mentioned before to the adjacent lot. They also have metal canopies and manufactured stones, and these are used to help break up the building's width and place some focus on those lower-level entrances. And here's an image I took on-site of that Fresenius building to the left, so the applicant has discussed wanting to match the texture and the look and feel and color of this building I did want to bring up the Metropolitan Council's sanitary sewer line that runs through this property. They do not allow individual hookups to that, which would make the hookup a lot easier for the applicant, but, so they will be required to connect to our local line that's in Springbrook Drive, which will result in a temporary closure of Springbrook during construction with a partial reconstruction there. As part of this application, we do have some requests for flexibility. I'll just kind of go through these one by one. So we require a 50-foot max building setback. Applicant is proposing around 80-foot, and this is to accommodate truck circulation. Point-six floor area ratio, applicant's proposing .32, and this is to allow for space for ponding, parking, and circulation. We have a 20,000 square foot max floor area, of which only 15,000 square feet can be used for a single use, and the applicant is exceeding both of those numbers respectively. And this is due to the size of the lot, the nature of the use, and their desire to maximize the use of the site. They also have those two driveways off of Holly Street. They can only be 30 feet max, according to our code, so they're requesting that they be 85 and 65 feet wide respectively to allow for that truck circulation there. For design, the code reads that the front of the building must face the front of the lot or the street, and the loading docks must be in the rear, so we do have opposite orientation here due to site conditions and truck circulation. And then finally, 30% of the building's facade should be brick and stone, and we are seeing about 10% or so here, and that's to keep some of those material and costs, or construction costs, down. So with that on the site plan, staff approves that Commission recommends approval to the council for the proposed site plan with these following conditions. One through four is kind of what we see on a lot of these. Five through eight here that I've bolded are a little more specific. They include things like outdoor seating, trash receptacles, bike racks. We are asking for a six-foot sidewalk along Holly Street to continue that, since that's what we had done with the property to the south. Trash enclosure location and screening details need to be submitted, as well as a plan for the rooftop mechanics and screening of those machines as well. Also, with the site plan, we recommend approval of those dimensional and design flexibilities. Then switching gears quick to the conditional use, within the Port District, office warehouse is a conditional use here, so they do need a conditional use permit. No existing CUP is currently tied to the property. And to staff's analysis, the proposal does meet all of our codes, CUP criteria. So with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed CUP for an office warehouse building based on these four findings of fact here. With that, I can open it up to questions. We do have the applicant here that can answer any questions for you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Commission, any questions for Mr. Behringer?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Behringer, so given the design intent of the Overlay District, and given the need for a conditional use permit, and given the amount of flexibility that's here, I just, can you walk us through a little bit of how staff is basically putting in a double-sized industrial building in a space that is kind of guided to not be that? Makes sense, or is the best and highest use of this property?
Well, we do see that it is actually, we feel that it is guided for this. It matches some of the surrounding uses. We do have, the building right to the north has a loading dock right off of Holly there. I believe staff report here, we do have it in the comprehensive plan. The subject property is planned for commercial use, so I can see your point there as well. We feel it fits with the character of the area and would be a nice addition to this area. Do you know the parts of your question?
If I may. I guess the question that I bring up is that, you know, there was discussion, I know, at the council about a nearby item that we talked about previously, about the aesthetics of that building and appearing to be industrial and looking at views from the Boulevard as well. The Overlay District was designed with the intent, especially with the FAR ratios, to effectively be office buildings. So is it, is it the intent that we believe this will...
So is it, is it the intent that we believe this will be effectively commercial industrial use, continue to be, and it, and that's what we want? I, I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, I know that's what the application we have here, but the, the Overlay Districts were meant to guide in a little more specifically. So has, has staff decided to pull back from that a little bit more? I'm trying to understand why. There, there's, that's a long list of flexibility requests compared to what we usually see.
Yeah. If it would be okay, Commissioner, could I, can I kind of bring this over to Max? He has some more history in this area than I do. Max, please. What are your thoughts?
Mr. Chair. So essentially, staff are looking at this as being similar to the IDC automatic expansion, but even more oriented toward the industrial side of the district because it's, it's facing Holly Street, which is almost entirely industrial, as opposed to facing out on Coon Rapids Boulevard. So even though the zoning district was the Port District, staff essentially didn't find that the, the industrial proposal was inappropriate for that area, essentially because it's, it's, you know, back behind other uses away from, from Coon Rapids Boulevard and faces almost exclusively other industrial uses. So even though it's not the core type of use that is generally what we're looking for in the Port District, I think staffs were hoping to see the Port District as having a lot of flexibility. Different sections of the Port District maybe being oriented toward different uses. Obviously, this is a decision that's up to the Planning Commission and City Council, and that's part of the flexibility element of the Port District. But Port Evergreen is, is a very large district. There's sections of it that are more residential. There are sections of it that are more commercial. And there are sections of it, sections of it, especially this area on Holly Street, that are oriented toward industrial. And it's, it's, staff's hope that that gradient can kind of be realized through, you know, these flexibility requests and that these different uses can kind of, you know, orient toward whatever district they're adjacent to, even though they're in the Port District themselves. So that's sort of the, the, the philosophy or the mindset that I've kind of been looking at this site particularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, short.
Commissioner Nabok.
I have a question for Planner Behringer and Planner Platsner. The area in question, and I think it's a valid point that you just brought up Planner Platsner. That specific area of that district, everything from that point on flows. The majority of those companies in that area, to my recollection, recollection are mostly warehouses and warehouses and manufacturers. It's very industrial in that area behind where Fresenius and QuickTrip and behind is. So I think that's a valid point of concern or a perspective to have. So I think in a way, it does, it is a difficult proposal, but I see some of the points, how it could fit into this general portion of the district. So I think there is some validity to this plan. It's not perfect, but it has some good points to it.
Commission, any other questions for Mr. Behringer?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haigler.
When I listened to the council meeting last night, or the previous meeting, they talked about the, the, one of the buildings that we had passed by, passed through, through our commission, and talking about it making a good impression on somebody driving down Coon Rapids Boulevard. Now I realize this isn't Coon Rapids Boulevard, but we want to make sure that it looks good. And if it matches Fresenius, you know, that's terrific, because I drove by there, I have driven by there before, and that building, you know, is, is a fantastic-looking building. But we'd like to make sure that it does match that, you know, quite closely.
Yeah. Mr. Commissioner, just to reiterate your point, the, kind of the most dressed-up part of this, this building is the, the part that is facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, so I would, I would concur with your point there that...
What's going to be on the side of Holly then, other than, you know, we have the loading docks there?
Yeah. Yep, so we do have the loading docks there. If, if we see the landscaping plan here, that's, they, they've really beefed up that landscaping in the Boulevard to kind of help with that screening, as well as kind of along the sides. And this is really with the shape of the lot, getting narrow as you go back further and having this being their only access. This really is the best place to put the loading dock?
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
It, from the, the drawings, the renderings that we have, it doesn't, it's not really dressed up, even along Holly.
Correct, correct. Not along Holly Street, but the, the part of the building that's, that's facing QuickTrip. That's, those are the main entrances that has the, the added here. I could pull that up. Instead of just waving my hands around, this will be the part that, that's, that's facing Coon Rapids Boulevard and the, the gas station to the east there.
And that, that shrubbery along there, that, is that what you're saying, the landscaping?
The landscaping I was just referring to is, is what's, what's in front of Holly. They don't propose any landscaping in front of this image. They will have some pockets of landscaping, sorry for back and forth here, in the, the parking lot, which is part of our requirement. So there will be some landscaping on that side of the building, but not directly in front.
So what you're showing here is Holly, Holly Street?
This is facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any figures on how far off of Coon Rapids Boulevard that would be?
Mrs., I, I haven't, Mr. Chair, I haven't measured that myself. I know it's, it's one, one property back from Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Do you have an aerial of, of that area that
Yep.
would show what would be between that and Coon Rapids Boulevard?
Yep, this one here should, should give us that picture.
So what, to, to the northeast, is that what the car wash for QuickTrip or?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yep, that, that building that's closer to that, that northeast property line is their car wash.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the edge of the site is about two hundred feet across the QuickTrip site from Coon Rapids, the Coon Rapids Boulevard right away, so two hundred feet from edge of site to the edge of the right away.
Thank you. Commission, any other questions for Mr. Behringer at this time?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Haigler. The one thing that I underline here about, the plan will require an access agreement through the adjacent property and a temporary closure and repair of Springbrook Drive. Now, Springbrook is very, very busy road, so just wondering about the amount of time that would take to, to complete that project? Or would Springbrook need to be shut down because, or for what amount of time?
Sorry, I was just getting to the picture where I brought that up. Yes, Mr. Commissioner, that is part of their sanitary connection that they would need to make in, in, in Springbrook. I don't have the amount of time that would take. I don't know if Mr. Platsner would be able to answer that from his experience.
That might be more of a question for the, the applicant, or we might have to ask our engineering team, but I wouldn't know.
Just, I know I drive that road regularly, and I would hate to have to zig and zag around and go by the Y or whatever, get through there.
Understood.
Any other questions at this time? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? Anything the petitioner would like to add to this? If so, please go to the microphone.
My name's Steve Dexter. I'm the developer on this, and I've worked with Max and Kurt here on the project. We own the Fresenius building next door, and we were, we developed that piece of property. And we're, we're looking to have this building look very similar to that. It can't look the same, but it's going to be very similar in appearance with the same concrete texture panels and some of the stone you're going to see. Yeah, we, we wish that we could have hooked up to that Met Council sewer line that runs along that north side, but they would not allow us to do that. We've asked the city to get use their influence, and the Met Council has continued just to refuse that. So we're not going to have really an issue with easements across the Fresenius property to then tap into the sanitary sewer on Springbrook. I'm just not aware yet. We were waiting for a final decision, which we got, I think, yesterday, wasn't it, on this? Is to just how mu, how much, how much closure is going to be necessary on Springbrook Drive? And we, I don't think it's going to have to close the street. I think it's going to be one lane, if anything, just to hook up along that same side where the Fresenius entrance is on Springbrook. So I don't think it's going to be a major closure, and it shouldn't take, I don't know. I, I just, I just have to defer to the construction people on that. I don't know. Other than that, is going to be, we hope, a nice building that will add to the, the value of the property there and will fit into the overall district, or the overall uses that are there now. Springbrook Drive, or not Springbrook, but Holly Street, I can tell you, I've driven by there many times. We own that building right across the street where the old Fresenius Clinic was. And Holly is probably one of the least traveled streets in Coon Rapids, as far as I can tell. I just haven't seen much traffic there at all. So we're hopeful that it, it's got good access. I think we've addressed the issue of having the trucks being able to turn around. We're going to have extensive landscaping along Holly to buffer and conceal the truck docks from, from Holly Street, from the Holly, from Holly Street view. And I, we've worked with Kurt, I think, on the landscaping to shield as much as we can where necessary, just to keep the building, so it, it looks nice and fits into the overall plan you guys have there.
Could you discuss or explain why you need such wide driveways on Holly Street?
Well, for the truck, for the trucks to make that turn into the, where the docks are, we have to, in order for the, the building and the parking lot to fit there, we have to make a wider turn so they have the area to turn down and then back into the truck dock and then come back around out. It just for, you know, we're talking sometimes fifty-three-foot rigs that have to get in there.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smokey.
Regarding the design flexibility, I guess I do have one clarifying question. So the district requires at least thirty percent of the facade that faces a street to be brick or natural stone. So I get that as discussed above, the front of the building faces the rear of the lot and is ten percent stone. So we're saying that, that backside is, rather than having thirty percent, it's going to have ten percent because it doesn't face a street? Is that how we, is, is that what I'm understanding correctly? I'm not clear.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that, that is correct. Essentially, looking at it as not facing a street directly is kind of a unique circumstance and would be a, a, a reason to potentially request not to have the, the full thirty percent brick or stone, sort of the way it was looked at.
On the side then that does face Holly, what percentage will be brick?
Oh, I, I...
And no, that's a follow-up question, sorry. So then, so then, on the side that does face Holly, what percentage would be brick then?
I think I'll defer to either Steve or Kurt on that one. I'm not sure.
Which, what's the one?
On the, on the side where the trucks will be, right, where the docks are, what percentage would be brick then?
Yeah, I don't, we don't show any brick on that, on that facing Holly Street.
Okay, so I'm going to come back with, I guess, this question, and as I'm, I'm not clear then why we have this concession. I, I realize that it's costly. However, it's a business decision to double the square footage, right? I get that that means more expense and so forth. It doesn't, to me, it's like you can still see the building from Coon Rapids Boulevard. I'm not clear on why we would concede to go down to even a ten percent on that side because of cost. There is a view, it's a business decision to double the size of the foot that comes with the cost. So I guess I'm just not clear why we would, why would we, we would agree to that. And I guess I would like to understand a little bit more on the side where the, the trucks will be. What sort of plans are there to make it look less industrial, right? What are we going to do? Is it going to just be a cement, you know, obviously docks? And, and are we having just gray brick walls? Like what is that side going to look like then, since this actual design flex pertains to the side that would be facing the street? So both of those questions.
Well, we will be having windows on the, that it makes it appear like it's a two-story building. There will be windows all along the top half of the building, even though there will be reflective and you won't be able to, they're not true windows, but that will give the appearance of a two-story building. And it, it mimics the same look as you will have on the Fresenius building.
Got it. So you're saying that rather than comply with the thirty percent, you're, you're asking to exchange that for windows, correct? On the side that faces Coon Rapids Boulevard, so instead of having the thirty percent brick, you'd like to dress it up with windows. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, yes, Eddie?
Commissioner, we, we actually do not show any windows on, on these current plans on the Holly Street side.
No, I'm talking now on the opposite side. Holly is where the, where the semis are. You're saying the windows are going to go on the side that faces Coon Rapids, correct?
Right.
That is correct.
Correct. And so you're asking to, instead of having the brick at thirty percent, reduce that to ten percent, and you're looking to replace some of that with windows. That I get. So that's great. I like that. On the opposite side, though, where there, it does face Holly, what I guess are the design plans to not make it look so industrial on that side? Since that's what the design flex, in my understanding, is, is intended, is to make sure that it looks appealing to the side that would see the most traffic, which again, I realize Holly is not a well-traveled road, but still.
No, I understand your question.
Okay.
Max, could you pull up that, the one elevation we have of, yeah? You see how I, do you, can you see the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On the backside, it's going to look like that where you have the contrasting ends on each, on each end.
This, I'm imagining then this being the dock, is that what you're saying?
That's being the dock.
Okay, so I would see those brownish tan
You would see the brown, right, the bookends on each side. And you would see the band across the middle.
How about the windows? Is there that? Oh, that's the dock side. Yes, I see. And so is the brick, is there going to be thirty percent brick on the backside then, or not?
No.
Do you, do you have a elevation for the southwest?
Mr. Chair, we did include those in the packet. I, I did not, that was my mistake. I did not put that in the slide deck here. I do not have that here. Can I?
Because I, I think the point that Commissioner Smoak is making is the southwest side facing Holly Street is really super bland. There's no, nothing that dresses that up at all, and why doesn't, since that is facing a street, why doesn't that require a thirty percent brick?
And I, and I guess, if I may, just to clarify my question, is staff okay with that? And that's, how did you get to, you know, that, that agreement, I guess? So since that's what it really, I, I love the idea on the other side. That's great with the windows. Is there, is there a need to maybe dress up the back somewhat? And that would be my question.
We, I, I think it would be feasible to add windows to that Holly Street side. We could do that. It's not on this elevation, but we, we... It's not on this elevation, but we, we, that's a easy thing for us to include in the, uh-
I think something to break that top up-
Sure.
Would be nice, is kind of what I'm seeing, so.
Just understand, too, that those, uh, the bookends that we're talking about on either end, those parapets are raised up a little bit-
Yep.
-from the center, so there's-
Awesome. So, it breaks that line?
It breaks that line up a little bit.
Yep, absolutely.
But we could certainly add windows to the back. I don't think that would, that's, that would be easy to do and we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Chair Schwartz.
Well, first, uh, my question then is that, I guess, to Mr., Mr. Plaxner, that would the thirty percent brick also be required for the Holly Street side?
Mr. Chair, um, that's a decision that the planning commission is able to make. Um, staff are okay with not meeting the thirty percent brick requirement due to, um, what we kind of consider unique circumstances on the site in that, um, you know, one side of the building is definitely going to need to be the loading area. That's facing Holly Street, so that's facing the main frontage instead of facing Coon Rapids Boulevard. And then, the, the front of the building essentially is facing away from the street frontage, um, but there is another business between that and Coon Rapids Boulevard. Um, thus, there is essentially no vantage where, um, a, a large amount of traffic is going to be right next to or directly seeing this building, the way staff's sort of looking at it. And thus, um, the, the opinion of staff is that that request for reduced brick and natural stone is reasonable. However, that's a, um, you know, a-
No, it's okay.
A question that the, the planning commission is, is definitely able to differ on and, and can request that that be met.
Commissioner Navalot.
The question I have for Planner Behringer, um, looking at the Coon Rapids side, which is, in this plan, is the back, the, the part, the northeast, that's facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, what portion of this proposal of the front of the building where employees, customers would enter, not trucks, but where the parking is, what portion of that facing part of the building will be visible from Coon Rapids Boulevard? What pers- is there a idea of the percentage of that would be seen from Coon Rapids Boulevard? Because I think that is the intent of some of this, of our requirements, uh, of the stone and the requirements that are usually, which is being talked about, about the Holly. But if the majority of the visibility and the building is inverted from the norm, the visibility is more important from Coon Rapids Boulevard. So, I really would like to know, with the existing environment there, what's visible from Coon Rapids Boulevard?
Mr. Chair, that's a great question. Um, I haven't looked into that. I think we could, we could look into that easily, uh, either from Google Street View and kind of calculate how much space there is of visual sight between the, the car wash at the, at the gas station and the actual gas station building. I think that would be the main sight that you would see through to this new building. That's definitely something that we can kind of estimate a calculation for.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, I just pulled it up on Google Maps, just to kind of see. Um, obviously, I don't have like a number of, a percentage of the building that you'd see, but there's a lot of landscaping trees, um, et cetera, in front of the gas station. Um, so the gas station is itself already pretty well screened from Coon Rapids Boulevard. Obviously, you can see back behind the gas station, you would be able to see the building. Um, but there, there is a lot in the way between Coon Rapids Boulevard and that building, uh, the gas station, the pumps, the trees in front of the gas station. So, um, you're going to get some visibility, but it's not going to be the main thing you're seeing, I think, if you're looking in that direction from Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Chair Schwartz, I have a follow-up question. Uh, on the north side of the proposed building, are there any other access points to the parking from other lots or from QuickTrip for this proposed eighty-two parking lots? Or is it all from Holly?
Mr. Chair, that will all be from Holly, is how they're-
Oh, right.
-proposing this.
And I know you made one of the conditions, uh, the trash receptacle. Does the petitioner have any idea of where the trash receptacle is going to get placed?
The trash receptacle side would probably be along the, this is the southwest side here, right?
Uh, southeast.
Southeast. We'd put those along the southeast or on the northwest corner up there. Probably one at each location. And we would have those enclosed like we do with the Fresenius building?
Well, ordinance requires it to be enclosed.
Yeah. But they would, the enclosure would match the building, yeah.
Mr. Behringer, is there a diagram that you could pull up with the, uh, the lot showing so that he could just point out exactly where he's talking here?
Mr. Chair, I think he can do here, can you see our mouse?
Yep.
Okay. So, he was talking about this corner here along the southeast.
Yes.
And then he also mentioned this corner, the, the northwest, up by the ponding area. So, basically, both corners of the dock side.
So, you would have two trash receptacles?
Yes. Mainly, um, we're looking at that because we might have, there might be two tenants in that building rather than just one. They each want their own receptacle.
And would there be easy access to those for, for the employees? Or would they have to come out the front doors and go all the way around the building?
No, they would have to, um, well, we could also put a trash receptacle up in the parking lot. I, I'm thinking more that, um, of the trash generated, of, of either the recycling or the trash generated by the warehouse activity.
Well, I, I'm just thinking wherever it's placed, it's got to be convenient for the, for the employees to be able to get to.
Right, so I think-
Especially, especially in the wintertime.
I'm thinking that, uh, for the warehouse employees, the convenience would be on those two corners I just described. And also be convenient for pickup.
All right. Commissioner, any other questions for petitioner at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
So, part of the design flexibility is, um, we're kind of, um, defaulting on the thirty percent brick or stone facade and this building will just exhibit ten percent? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct, Commissioner.
And what did we, I can't jog my memory, but for the Fresenius building, what, what is their exposure to the stone facade?
The percentage?
What percentage? It seemed to me like we did-
There was some flexibility on that building, but I don't recall exactly what it was.
Mr. Chair, for me.
Mr. Geiser.
Uh, I believe, if memory serves, the flexibility was actually around the glass percentage because it's an office and a medical use. So, it wasn't so much stone as it was a percentage glass and it was, we reduced the amount of glass with the expectation of privacy within the building because of the use of the facility. Uh, but it was compensated for, with more stone, um, on the Springbrook side. That's what we ended up kind of meeting in the middle on, on that one. If, memory serves, that's where, that's where we did it, but it's, uh, because this is a warehouse use, um-
It's a little different.
Looking at the, uh, I'm going to have to look it up here, uh, there's a s- there's, uh, windows and doors, sixty percent of the horizontal length between three and eight feet of the street level facade shall be transparent, um, and because this is a warehouse, it does not apply, but it did apply to Fresenius and that's where we had flexibility there. So, that is a Port District requirement. Um, so it's, because the buildings are different uses and different intensities and different types, we've got kind of apples and oranges, um, on the requirement of what the out, facade looks like.
Yeah.
Sorry to step in on the staff there, but the-
Commissioner, that's, that's, that's right on.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, any other questions for petitioner at this time? All right, thank you. We may have more for you later.
Okay.
All right, we do need to have a public hearing on this matter. So, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning cases twenty-four dash twelve and twenty-four dash thirteen, both the site plan and CUP for new industrial building at nine-two-five-five Holly Street Northwest. Anywa- anyone here wants to speak to this public hearing? Anywa- any- any, anyone who wants to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings and limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmoek.
So, I guess I do just want to address the, uh, the southwest side with the rest of the commission, just to make sure that I'm not overthinking this or overrequesting this. So, the one thing, uh, we didn't discuss is on that southwest elevation, they are doing a screening, right, um, from the street? So, um, there is the addition of that and, um, I guess I was more, I'm, was more concerned with, again, how we came to this conclusion that ten percent was okay. It seemed, the way that it was written in our, um, documentation, um, that it was more of a cost issue, which was concerning to me, um, since the size of the building was, it is, and was the, at the request of the, um, you know, the, um, the property owner, uh, the petitioner, and so I didn't see that the cost was a sufficient reason. So, I, and then, uh, understanding that that design flex is on a side, um, that doesn't even face Holly Street, wanting to then just make sure are we, uh, do we need to consider something for the Holly Street? So, I guess I just would like to understand from others, um, if they are, um, in agreement that maybe we should still have them dress it up, add windows and add that to the, um, you know, to the, um, motion, or if we think that what is proposed is sufficient and the answer we received is sufficient.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, no.
Commissioner Schmoek, I do like that idea of dressing up some windows along the backside. I think that's a good idea. I think, just the way it's constructed on that lot, you know, the, the visibility to Coon Rapids Boulevard is a little bit limited and you've already got some screening with the, uh, the QuickTrip and such in front of it. And, you know, it presents as a two-story building, even though, you know, it's not. So, um, I think if we did some windows on the backside, I, I think they've done a nice job putting together on the lot and I think it makes sense for that, that lot in that neighborhood.
And so, we're talking on the Holly Street is the, is the side I'm referring to?
Yeah. Well, there's no windows, right?
Correct. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geiser.
So, uh, I have to disagree slightly here. Um, part of where I'm a little frus- frustrated with this, um, I look at the orientation of the building. I think it makes perfect sense because, yeah, if you want to do freight and dock doors, okay, so that makes the back of the, the front of the building, the back of the building, which then makes it the front. So, that's the first thing. And that's the most critical design element of this building in order to make truck doors work. Setback makes sense. Um, frankly, I would say the fact that they're doing a whole bunch of landscaping and screening on that median fully justifies that setback, so I think the setback is great. Florida area ratio, we've discussed this before, unless this is a multi-story building, that ain't, we're not going to hit a point six. So, I think that's kind of a foregone conclusion if the staff and everybody agrees that it's an industrial use and it makes sense for the, what's there. So, those three kind of set the design of the building. Max area, though, is something where I'm starting to get a little frustrated with, uh, with respect to the area and the driveway and then the materials. If this building were smaller, the truck, the dock doors could move further away. It would increase the setback. However, that would allow the driveways to shrink because then the trucks could pull in and then have a larger turnaround pad. Because the building is the size that it is, that is what's driving it. So, because the building is so large, and granted, if there was one or two tenants, forty thousand square foot warehouse, twenty thousand square foot warehouse, if there's split tenants there, that's still quite a bit. Um, so, it, the design of the building is necessitating the rest of the requirements for the truck turnarounds. You can go back to behind Target and they have a regular curb cut there and they can, they, but they've got a large pad on their property to allow for backing, fronting and whatnot. So, if the building was smaller, they could keep all of that on site and shrink the curb cuts. So, the driveway exception, I'm not a hundred percent sold on. Uh, when it comes to the building materials, like we discussed, because we're flip-flopping the building, we're kind of trying to say, well, the front of the building's in the back, so therefore, we don't need to make it look like the front. Well, okay, but to that extent, then, we're, we're, by granting the orientation exception, we have to then look at the design and facade exception. And that, those two together start to kind of build on each other in a way that I don't feel meets the intent of what we're going for. We talk a lot about Coon Rapids Boulevard viewing through QuickTrip. Actually, one of the biggest portions here is if you look at the, the, what effectively is the east corner of that building, that's the most visible corner because you will, the Fresenius parking lot does not screen that at all. That is the corner visible through Springbrook. And so, Springbrook Drive will have that whole side available. Now, they do have quite a bit of screening on the southeast elevation there, which is good. I like that. But if brick were further up on the northeast elevation and then wrapped around to the southeast elevation, that accent point on the southeast corner, or the southeast elevation northeast or that east, eastern corner would then start to meet the intent. That is the visible corner of this property. I agree with the applicant. Holly is a very quiet street. I don't think we need to do a ton there. Windows in the second story or to emphasize or to basically make a faux second story, I agree, I think that would be good. I don't think we need to get architectural brick or stone on, on the back, quote, backside, frontside, dock, loading dock side of it, if you want to call it that. But if we're going to be granting all of these other design exceptions to basically make an industrial building fit here, I do, I would like to see more of a design aesthetic put on that visible corner, some sightline review from Springbrook, from Coon Rapids Boulevard, understand where those emphasises should be. I also am looking at it from the sense that we don't know where the trash receptacles are go- are going to go. We don't have the outside, so there's a lot of things on this plan that I feel like need a little more baking. So, I personally would like to provide feedback to the applicant and let this sit for a month and then come back to it. Um, I believe that this is a good intent and that the, where it's going makes sense, but there are a lot of questions and a lot of exceptions and a lot of things that are going there. And given the con- uh, conversation that we've heard about the ideal door development and the industrial focus there that is a stone's throw from this building, I do think that we could get a little bit more on this for the amount of flexibility we're looking at to make it fit the design intent of the overlay district.
Anyone else?
I don't have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I don't have anything pertaining to what Mr. Geiser said. I think, uh, he spoke, uh, spoken very well, but, uh, wasn't it at one time there was a parking, truck parking issue on Holly Street? And I drove there last night again, and I did see a truck parked on Holly. I don't see any no-truck parking signs there anymore.
Yeah, by my, um, are you?
Mr. Ruchacorni.
Can I just clarify, Commissioner Haikula, are you asking about truck parking on the street within the city? Like semi-truck parking? Are you talking about semi-trucks?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so you can't park those on the street in Coon Rapids? You're not supposed to. You're talking about an enforcement question.
Yeah, I know you're not supposed to, but you can.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Hey, I guess, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Geisler.
I would, in this, in the essence of asking for more of the exceptions to be met and outlined and laid out on the site plan, and so that we can have fewer requirements and more things in the site to meet more of our design criteria and desired approach, I would move that we table planning case twenty-four dash twelve and twenty-four dash thirteen until the July meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
Before a second on that, I guess, should I clarify? Ask clarifying question on that?
All right.
I guess the question I have is, for the petitioner as well, just to make sure we're clear, what would we be asking them to come back with then? I mean, is it on each of these items, they should come back with an alternative? Or are we saying that we just want more, looking for more justification to get comfortable with it? What is our expectation if we ask to postpone it?
Mr. Chair, I would, in my case, I would be looking for specifically to see item five, item six, item seven, item eight, all be addressed so that they're not conditional items or items of requirement on their packet and actually visible. And then I would also specifically request at least an improvement on the facade, as we've discussed, on all, all the various pieces of the facade that we've discussed, as well as the information we've asked of staff as far as sight lines and guidelines, working with the applicant to determine where that's appropriate. That would be my hope and expectation on a revision.
Chair Schwartz.
And I would add updated elevations to include whatever windows are going to be placed on the backside or the southwest side, along with any other changes that you made to be doing to the elevations. Commissioner Nablock.
I'm asking for clarification. Now, Chair Schwartz, is this a recommendation to the applicant, or is this a recommendation to the planning commission, or not planning commission, to the planning department? And then the second part of that is, can, I'd like to have more specifics, not just guidelines, of what this proposal is supposed to entail? Or is it just a recommendation, come back next month? I'd like to have some clarification on those two parts from somebody.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Geisler, but you're asking that the conditions five, six, seven, and eight be more completely addressed to the information that we're receiving from the petitioner.
Mr. Chair, my intent of tabling is to have this application be more complete with respect to the discussion that we have had tonight, and to have more of that contained within the elevations and the site plan and the packet that we would then subsequently review for approval. But at this time, it would just be a motion to table. Otherwise, if there isn't a second, then that motion would then fail. So I think, I think we do need to decide, and then we can move to discussion if we want to.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
So the one, just as a point of consideration, I guess, is it is mentioned in the packet as part of the site plan, five, six, seven, and eight, that they need to be addressed, right? I realize that it's not, it's not clear to us in terms of how each of those items is being addressed, hence the questions, right? The consideration, I would say, though, is that we do know that we do want to trust staff to come, you know, to follow through with those. So is there an element of, you know, allowing staff to be able to just make sure that each of those are addressed within the guidelines? Or do we actually need to see a revision? Would be my question. I'm trying to help, is all. So it's, again, I want to make sure we're not, we're not trying to overthink this, but yet I want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Chair, at this point, I'd say, point of order is that if there's a failure to second, the motion fails. So if there is no second, then the motion would fail, and then we would proceed onward.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
Could you clarify? So essentially, since five, six, seven, and eight are outlined as identified by the planning department, so are, the recommendation before us right now is to either vote for or against this?
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Mr. Buchacconi.
I, not a huge Roberts Rules guy, but what the body has before it is a motion by Commissioner Geisler, and really should be constrained to whether there's a second or not right now. And if there's more discussion that's needed, that can always happen after a second with a vote, or if there is no second, Commissioner Geisler is correct, the motion fails.
I think what's going on right now, people are trying to get a clarification of what he wants to have tabled.
Mr. Chair.
And that has to be done before a second, because once there's a second, there cannot be discussion on a tabled motion.
Mr. Chair, point of order, that actually would be the, there could be discussion on the motion to table it. So we could, we could continue discussion after that, but...
Well, then, to move things along, I'll second the motion to table.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Geisler.
Commission, as we have done previously, there are times where we see applications where we do see conditions, we trust that staff could execute them. Typically, they're generally immaterial. When there are aspects missing from the site plan, we have sent them back to ask for them to be added and come back and review them and see them. In combination with the six flexibility requests, as well as the lacking items on here, as well as our desire to add windows on the facade on the rear, as well as our questioning and conversation about stone on the, on the, what would be the front of the building, not opposite the loading dock, I believe that there's significant requests that we have bundled up here on facade changes, on, on site plan elements that are missing, that it would behoove us to have a more complete site plan to view and review and approve. And I think it would also be in the best interest of the city to get all those squared away now, instead of putting it on staff, because of the volume of flexibilities that we will be recommending to the city council to then go through, who will most likely see a more complete version than what we are. I would prefer to recommend, based on a more complete vision of what we're approving today. That's, that is the essence of why I would like to table this.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
And just to be one hundred percent clear, we are only talking about twenty-four dash twelve, the site plan, right now. Would we also be doing the same for the twenty-four thirteen, the conditional use permit?
I think you said both.
Did you say both?
I did say both.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion to table is approved with Commissioner Nablock opposed.
And Mr. Chair, just briefly for the record there, we've already started drafting emails to extend the sixty-day rule for the applicant giving a little bit more time.
Thank you. All right, moving along, we have the next case, which is planning case twenty-four dash ten and twenty-four dash eleven, a rezoning and preliminary plat for Cardinal Crest, Harsted Hills Incorporated. Mr. Platner, get it right this time.
Okay, so I have before you a request for a rezoning and a preliminary plat for a four-point-four-seven acre lot that includes an existing single-family home. So this is with the LDR one zoning district. And what the applicant is requesting is eleven, a preliminary plat and a rezoning, so that they can build eleven single-family homes on the site. So they're in a parcel that's zoned LDR one, there's a subdivision to the south of that that's zoned LDR two and has fourteen homes on it. There's a property containing electrical utilities to the north, Adams Elementary to the west, and then we have more single-family homes to the east across East River Road. So there's a rezoning request from low-density residential one to low-density residential two. The land use is low-density residential, which does allow either the LDR one or LDR two zoning. So both of the zoning districts, whether keeping it what it is or rezoning it, would match with the comprehensive plan designation. The reason for the rezoning request is due to the lot depth requirement. In the LDR one district, single-family homes need to be a hundred fifty feet, sorry, single-family home lots need to be a hundred fifty feet deep, whereas in the LDR two district, they only need to be a hundred thirty-five feet deep. The applicant was able to create a cul-de-sac in the center with homes around it in the LDR two district, whereas the LDR one district, homes would only be able to be on one side of the road. So that was the reasoning for the request from the applicant. So if the rezoning were to be approved, the preliminary plat would need to meet the LDR two zoning requirements. So I'm requesting that the planning commission consider the item against the LDR two zoning district. So it does meet the, each lot, sorry, each of the eleven lots meet the eighty-foot minimum width, a hundred thirty-five-foot minimum depth, and ten thousand eight hundred square foot minimum area requirements of the LDR two district. So they are meeting the standards of the LDR two district in terms of dimensional standards. There are currently utilities on both sides of East River Road. The city is planning on decommissioning this, the utility on the east side, or sorry, on the west side, which is the side that this parcel is on, so they would need to cross East River Road and connect to the utilities on the east side of the road. The applicant shows stormwater ponds located in the, along the north edge of the site and the southwest edge of the site, which are all connected together by easements. There have been, the engineering department has been working with the applicant to potentially change some of these easements, or even potentially create an outlot to allow city staff, public work staff, to access those stormwater ponds. The city would be responsible for maintenance of those stormwater ponds, since as a single-family residential development, an HOA would not be required. So it needs to be made sure that the, that city staff can access those maintenance ponds. So there may be potentially some small revisions of the proposed, of the preliminary plat in the future, which would be reflected on the final plat, the final preliminary plat approval and the final plat approval, if this is needed. And this is just something that the applicant is working with the engineering department on. There is an existing sidewalk along East River Road. Originally, the applicant proposed a trail directly to the school, which is to the west, from the cul-de-sac. And the school district actually rejected that proposal. The school district stated that they would prefer to have only one access onto the playground from neighborhood, so that they wouldn't have to staff two different trails accessing the school. So apparently, the school district needs to, you know, make sure that they're aware of who's coming and going from the school property, and they didn't want to add another access onto the back of the property, especially because it would be accessed toward the ball field rather than the playground. So in order to access the school, children would need to walk along the sidewalk along East River Road and then go to the development of the south and use that trail to access Adams Elementary. So here I have a grading and drainage plan for the site, and I've highlighted in red the easement that contains the stormwater ponds, as well as the access. So the access is coming northwest off of the edge of that cul-de-sac, and the easement basically surrounds the east and parts of the north and south sides of the development. And staff are concerned about getting to the southwestern pond via that easement. Generally, property owners will build fences that go into those easements, and that won't be a possibility with that southwestern pond. City staff will need to be accessing that pond via that easement. So there may be some potential for adding an easement between lots five and six on the southwestern side. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to shake out yet, but that might be a change that is needed. So I did just want to highlight that. It's kind of difficult to see, but you can see the utilities running along East River Road. There's green on the west side, red on the east side. Those are, those are both sewer and water lines. The green ones are planned to be decommissioned, and the green there also is pretty much the same location as the sidewalk along East River Road. And then I've circled the trail access to the school from the development of the south. So what you have here is the fourteen-home development of the south, and then the single-family home in the wooded area where the development is proposed, just north of that. So with that, the city staff do recommend approval of the rezoning, based on the findings that it is in line with the surrounding LDR two zoned residential areas, and that, you know, it, there wouldn't be no adverse impact on the surrounding areas, seeing as it's surrounded by a school, a utility area, and homes at that same LDR two density, and does meet the comprehensive plan requirements. Staff also recommends approval of the preliminary plat with conditions related to engineering comments, highway department comments, generally standard conditions. There will be the requirement of a developers' agreement for this development, should it be approved. So staff are working on a developers' agreement that would need to be entered into between the city and the applicant. And that is all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platner. Commissioner, any questions? Mr. Platner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Platner, the drainage ponds, are those meant to be infiltration basins, drainage ponds? Or, I mean, which way are we going here?
The southwestern pond is an infiltration basin, the northern one is a pond that then drains to the northwest.
Okay.
Away from the site.
So we would expect seeing water on the north side of the site regularly?
Correct.
Okay. And then with respect to the infiltration basin kind of being effectively landlocked, I mean, that seems very atypical for our designs. They're usually backed into a green space, or, you know, I mean, this is kind of an infiltration basin in a bunch of people's backyards. Kind of why, why is staff okay with getting to that? That seems a little atypical for us.
So, if I may, that is, that's something that will probably have to be changed in some way. One of the options is to create that as an outlot, so that it's not directly in residents' backyards, but engineering staff are working with the applicant to correct that. I don't have enough expertise in this element of site plan to really weigh in one way or another as to how this will end up looking. However, both the applicant and the engineering department are confident that the changes to the site plan layout would likely be minor, but unfortunately, that's really the amount of depth I can answer that question with.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Just to put, just to put the question into there, if the infiltration basin is carved out as an outlot, are lots five and six still buildable as far under the LDR two minimum lot size requirements? That, that kind of cuts them in half.
It would, it would cut down some of the backside of those lots. So they would be buildable if the outlot were, and the infiltration basin there were smaller than it's being shown right now. However, there probably would be some issues if it was, the infiltration basin was built out at this exact size.
Okay, so we might have two lots on this plat that might not be viable if we, depending on what staff does with the outlot?
With, with, correct. Without changing the location or the size of the infiltration basin, if an outlot were something that staff would pursue, then, yeah, essentially, in order to keep those lots viable, the location and size of that infiltration basin would need to change. So we wouldn't bring something forward where we had non-viable lots. We would make sure that those lots were viable and change the infiltration basin instead.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Thank, thank, uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hickel.
Uh, off, on a little tangent, but, uh, you talked about the school district not allowing the kids to walk. Is there some sort of a fence or something that will stop them from going through?
There is a fence, so they would have needed to create an opening in the fence in order to have that trail, and the school district prefers not to create an opening in the fence.
And the kids that are in the, uh, like, the adjoining area, they, they're also fenced off, so they can't walk?
It's fenced off except for the trail. So the trail, the trail in the adjoining area has an opening in the fence that they can access the school from, but there would be no way to access the school, say, from people's backyards or by going around the other way. Does that answer your question? Kind of show. So my understanding is that at least everything north of this trail is fenced off, if you can see my cursor there. So anyone coming from this parcel, the northern parcel here, would not be able to get onto the school property unless they were to create an opening in that fence. And that's what the school district prefers not to do.
Any other questions? Do we, do we have the petitioner?
We do have the applicant here tonight, yes.
Anything you'd like to add, if so, please.
Sure.
Go to the microphone.
Never give up a chance to talk.
Give your name and address for the secretary, please.
My name is Martin Hurstead, 2195 Silver Lake Road. And, um, I've developed a lot of land in the Twin Cities. And, um, I have two sons that are in the building business these days, and they got dad out of retirement to help them find some lots in town. Um, my son Reed, uh, we came across this property a number of years ago. There was a couple of lots on the end of Tamarack, just right around the corner from there, um, the other side of the school, and my son Reed bought those two lots, or I helped him buy those, and he built a couple of homes there. And while we were building those homes, I said, "You should go up and knock on that door of that, of this particular house here." And so my son Reed started a relationship with that person then. And when, uh, that person passed away, we, we purchased the property, okay? And so what we're talking about building here is it's going to be 11 lots. It's going to be one builder. It would be Reed Hurstead, building them under Hurstead Homes. They're going to be custom homes. Um, if you look at the grading plan, we are going to import some soil to the property to create walkout lots on them, so they're going to be a higher-end house. Um, I approached the school district on trying to get a nice pathway cutting through there. We even called the name of the project Cardinal Crest, um, to bring the school name into it, uh, so to speak, and, and create an asset for the community. These are going to be really nice houses. It'd be, you know, homes between 5, 700,000. Um, they'll be, they'll be, they'll be homes you'll be proud of in the community there. Um, the school district turned me down on allowing that, the, cutting the opening there. I said, "We'll put a nice blacktop trail. We'll go right up to it. We'll put landscaping along it, whatever you need." Um, they said they weren't interested. And I said, "I don't understand that." And they said, "Well, it's another access point where we have young kids that are out here, and so we have to have staff that's watching the kids, and mere another opening just creates a potential that something could happen." And so I said, "I understand." They, they pointed out that there's a sidewalk along, um, East River Road. And I said, "Well, you know how kids are. They're either going to jump the fence anyhow, or they'll be cutting through backyards or whatever. You're not going to get them to walk all the way around that." And they said, I said, "Does that mean then you're going to send a school bus over there for them? Or, I mean, what does that mean?" And they, they said, "You know, we'll have to deal with that when and if it happens." And so I said, "Well, I hope you change your mind, and if there's anything I can do to change it, you know, let me know." Um, but they, they said, "No, that's our decision." Um, I recognize the problem with the ponding and the infiltration basins. Um, that's development in today's modern world, is we're required to do that. I mean, I wouldn't put all of that on there. We did soil tests on the property out there, and it's predominantly sand out there, which means, are these going to be dry ponds? Probably. I mean, if you look at it right now, what happens is there's a little bit of a wet spot in the, in what would be the north, the northwest corner up there. There's a little tiny, it's, they call it de minimis, it's smaller than, than the, uh, I mean, it's, it's small enough that it doesn't really count, so to speak. We are before the watershed as, as we speak. We have a full application before them. Um, but our ponding is what's required for this development. There's water that comes in off-site that has to go into that infiltration basin up on the far end up there. Would I like to put that up there? Absolutely not. I'd rather have the trees that are up there. Um, but the, we're required, and so you have to put it in somewhere. Well, then you say, "All right, how are you going to get at it?" Well, we proposed coming through between lots, and the city doesn't like that. I understand that. It's, it's hard, because we don't have to worry about cleaning out those ponds for another 10 years or so, if we ever have to clean them out at all, with it being sand, but you do need to have access to it. Yes, we can put easements on there. We can make access from that standpoint. But something to keep in mind here, and I haven't had a chance to respond to staff or anything at this point, because the staff report just recently came out. But on the other side of the school fence, so to speak, okay? There's a pipe that comes from the development to the south of us, the cul-de-sac that would be to the south of us. There's stormwater, all actually goes over into a pipe that's on the school side of the fence, and that easement butts all the way up to the fence. And it's an easement that runs along the whole property line there. And so technically, there is access to what would be our infiltration basin that the city already has, that's literally, it butts right up to our property line. So once we take our, our infiltration basin and say, "All right, we're going to put an easement, or if you want it as an outlot, we could even do that." But there would be access to both of these ponds just from there. Now, if you go to the north side of our property, our property butts up to the NSP property. So it's, it's undeveloped land, and I'd like to think that we could come through the NSP property to clean out that pond there. But even at that, what we can do is we can build a shelf all the way along our northern property line. So the access could either come from the school, which has, it's, there's no trees, there's no nothing, that's all the way along there, which you have full right to do it as, as a city, to go on to your easement. If they were going to come in and clean out our pond, I'm sure they'd clean out the end of that storm sewer pipe that's at the end of there for the development to the south. And so to take down a little piece of, it's, it's, it's nothing more than a chain-linked fence, to take down a little section of it, to get in there, to get the truck in there, and then we can have access that goes along the sides of the ponds, and they could all be cleaned out and whatnot, from that standpoint. We are going to lose a lot of trees on this site. We did a tree inventory of every tree that's on there. There's some nice trees in there, but there's a lot of really bad trees. I think in your packet, you'll see our, our tree. There's a lot of box elder and ash. There's also some elm, and there's some beautiful oaks, okay? Um, I'd love to save every tree that's on the site. Um, trees equate to higher-value lots, which create the higher-value houses. And so we'd love to keep them, but we don't want water problems. We got to worry about drainage. We don't need water going on to surrounding property. We need it directed towards our ponds and our infiltration basins and whatnot. And so there's going to be a lot of trees that are going to have to come down. We wanted to leave trees all the way along East River Road there. There's talk of possibly requiring us to have access to get to cleaning out the pond that runs along the north side by mowing down the trees there so that it can come in there. And I said, "Wait a minute. Can't we just create this bench all the way along the north side of that pond? And once again, you come from either between the lots, where we give you an easement, or you come from the easement that's on the school property." And so that's my quick answers to what I heard earlier. Um, as you can see, I talk a lot, um, but I, 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 I'm here to, happy to answer any of your questions or any of the neighbors, if the neighbors are here. I, that's, that's my intention.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, no.
In terms of, um, keeping those values high, are there some minimum requirements or covenants that you'll have in place in the neighborhood that ensure some of that? Like building size, going types?
No, we, we, what's, what's kind of hap, I mean, it's, it's crazy what's happened to lot values these days. I mean, it's just, they've just gone through the roof. So, uh, the, the, the lots that'll be in this project are going to be somewhere between 150 and 170,000 for just a lot, okay? So now, what the general rule of thumb is, is some people build four times a lot value in the house. It's getting so, it's tough to build a house for under 500,000 these days. So you start adding it all up, and what's going to happen here is you're going to, I mean, we could very easily touch $700,000 houses in this project. So I'm not a big believer in, in, um, in putting, you know, minimum standards on, on projects like that. I mean, if you follow the Hurstead name around town, you'll see we build a lot of high-quality, high-end developments. And, you know, this is, this is a, this is a great little spot, backing up to a, the elementary school. It's a perfect family environment, okay? And it's, I always equate it to, if you can see the blinking light on the IDF, you know what? There's great demand for it. And you can, it's, it's close enough to the cities. It's, it's going to be a quality development at the end of the day. There's not going to be any rental properties.
But if there's, if there's no minimums, I mean, if you can afford to buy a $150,000 lot, but you can't afford much of a house, can you put a 960 split there? Next to a 2,500 square foot two-story? I mean...
We'd never let that, it, it's never going to happen, okay? What we have to do is we, I mean, I have a project, for example, right now in Vadnus Heights, which is my, for my son Reed. It's a little infill development. We tore down a couple of old houses. We have 21 lots in there. Um, in that project, when we first went in it, we were proposing to the council, we're going to build houses in there that were going to be 600 to 700,000. We have more houses over a million dollars in there than we do at 600,000. And what's happened is it's just, if you've got money and you want to build close into the city, and you want to live where the houses are more, you know, you, you, you go build a one, you, you tear down a house, and you got a three or four or $500,000 house on either side of you, it's kind of hard to build a million-dollar house in the middle. But when you have 11 of them or something like that, I don't want to leave you with the impression that it's going to be a million-dollar houses in there. It might be. I don't, I don't know that. But what happens is we'll come in there and we'll build a model right out of the chute, and it'll be put in the parade of homes, and it sets the price point for the project. We set the prices on the lots. We say, "Here's our plans that we're building in this project. We got a half a dozen different plans, and that's where we go."
So you kind of do that by the plans that you're willing to build there? So you might not have covenants, but you say, "These are the plans we could build here," which essentially does that, gives you minimums?
And we protect, we, we, we protect our people that we end up building for. I mean, we're, Reed's third generation at this now. Before, it was, it was Keith Hurstead, at Hurstead Todd Construction, then it was me, at Hurstead Homes. Um, I have a brother Forrest, who built his Twin City Townhomes. Um, and now there's Reed. And so this is continuation. This is, we're not a fly-by-night builder or developer that does the stuff that's in one day and out the next day. This is, this is, this tradition here, and it's, I'm very protective of, of what my, what, what my son is doing with our name going forward.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Daisler.
Mr. Hurstead, are you aware of the project for the 610 interchange being redeveloped that will locate the access one block closer to your property?
I am aware of it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you're aware that's a significant change. It will be a significant increase in volume at that, effectively, one, just on the north side of that NSP building, or NSP lot.
I, I'm aware of it, and I, I suggested to staff, when this talk about moving the, the sewer and water hookup to the, to the other side of the road. I said, "Why would we want to tear up East River Road twice, okay? Why don't, why don't you let me hook up to, to the west side for right now, okay? And what I'll do is I'll deposit with the city the funds of what it would take to extend that pipe to the other side, so when you're ripping up all of East River Road, you can do it at that point. But why tear it up now and then do it again when you got to move the development to the south, and you're tearing up for the interchange to the north? And I mean, you just got so much going on. Let's, let's work, figure out a way to work smarter." So, yeah, we are aware of it. Okay. That's why we'd love to keep the, some of the trees on there. And so that, that northeast portion there, I mean, I even hate, I mean, I even hate the fact that to make, but I understand why you need it. You need that access to clean out that pond in the future. But it's going to, once again, it's going to take all the trees that are on the north side of the pond, along our northern property line. It'll take all of those out of there. And I said, "You know, as crappy as the trees are, it would be nice to leave them, because it's, it's a great buffer there." So I, I, you know, reality is, is that pond, if you look at the, the topography of that pond, it's got a deep spot that's on the west end of it, but it's very shallow going towards the east. So I said, "You know, with it being sand, and I've built so many, I mean, I got ponds over in Brooklyn Park that are 400 feet long and 100 foot wide that have never had a drop of water in it, short of when they have a two-inch rainfall. I'm pretty sure that this is going to be one of them. But to build, to tear down all those trees so that we can go in there to clean it out if it ever has that, it drives me crazy, but that's, I go by the rules."
All right, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? May have questions for you later. Thank you. All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, we'll open a public hearing in Planning Case 24-10 and 24-11, the rezoning and preliminary plat for Cardinal Crest, Hurstead Hills Incorporated. Anyone who wish to speak, public hearing. Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Lisa Korn. I live at 8, or 858 90th Avenue, the development right to the south of this one. Um, I am a real property appraiser. I've been one for 23 years. And I did look you up, and you do build a nice house. It's very pleasantly decorated and high-quality. My concern is the LDR1 preserves the natural features of the area, including the amount of trees. So I don't understand why it can't be left as LDR1 and have fewer houses to preserve the current zoning. Um, if they had to get rid of two of the lots anyways, say, for the retention ponds, that brings them down to nine. So I'm curious as to how many houses they would be able to build if it were left at LDR1. The lots are going to be, um, higher-end cost anyway, so it's still offset, I'm assuming, most of the cost to develop that street. Um, I appreciate the fact that it's going to be developed. I assumed it would be when it went up for sale. The other concern is, is with the runoff. The houses that are, I live across the houses that will be backed up to this. But there is, it is a little bit elevated, and if he's going to be bringing in more dirt to do, um, walkouts and whatnot, there's going to be more runoff to the people that are directly across from me, which brings me to concern like how it's going to overflow into our street itself. I know when the school did the pavilion back behind where I live, they built it up, and so now water runs into my yard. So in the wintertime and the spring, when it, the, there's thaw, it's very wet and spongy back there, and I'm not really thrilled with that idea. So I'm assuming that might happen again. Secondly, with the 610 change, that's already going to bring a lot of increased traffic onto East River Road. Having 11 more houses on that road is going to increase that even exponentially more. So fewer houses would be more ideal, and, and also in keeping with the more natural feel of the, the area as it is right now. Did I miss anything? I don't think so. We would, as the development right to the south of that, we would just appreciate the fact that if it would stay the LDR1, have fewer houses, it would just have less impact on the environment right there, the road. Um, and also, we are the street that has that access where he's got it circled in red right there. That was put in, um, actually due to one of my high school, or my elementary friends. Um, her sister wrote to the school because they had to walk, because the school bus didn't come to that street. They had to walk on East River Road, which didn't have a sidewalk at the time, and it was a busier road. at the time, and it was a busier road, down to Eighty-Ninth to get to the school. So they, she made, she petitioned to have that added. It's not very well-maintained, the concrete's all broken up, but there is a lot of already foot traffic from people across the development that come through there. So if that development's there, and they're not allowed that access, which I understand to keep the safety of the students of the school, then potentially, those kids are gonna be coming down the sidewalk, walking down our street to get to the school as well, which is gonna increase more foot traffic. I've also noticed, parents don't like waiting at the school for their kids, so they're like, coming down our street, sitting at our cul-de-sac, walking through the footpath to get their children, which just increases more foot traffic and, and whatnot on our street, so. For those reasons, that is why we would prefer to keep it the LDR, have fewer houses, keep it high-end, keep it a more natural environment right there with less impact on traffic and the environment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Doug Spurgeon, I live at H seventy-one, Ninetieth Avenue, Northwest Coon Rapids, so we've, and the gentleman that Mr. Harstead referenced was my father-in-law. We've lived in our current house for over forty years. When we talk about Alan's, and that was my father-in-law's name, Alan Erickson, when we talk about his property, I don't think he would've ever envisioned eleven houses in that space. We've, we've talked about the drainage and the, the retention pond. The one thing he complained about repeatedly every year when we had lots of rain is that it would flood his property. So I think we need, we can't lose sight of that issue. There's a lot of construction that is scheduled for that corner of Coon Rapids, whether it's the, the six-ten entrance-exit, you know, construction potential relative to the noise level. I mean, we talk about, there's lots of trees on Alan's property. That was a buffer, that was a sound buffer for us. Now, if though, we, we just heard that, the majority of those trees are gonna come down. Do you know what that will do to the sound level, to the people on, not only from, from an Adams School standpoint, from a, from a Ninetieth Avenue standpoint? That's a tremendous impact. That land, you know, and we're, we're all nature lovers, those trees house a significant number of animals in various forms, whether it's deer, fox, and yes, there's an occasional coyote in that, in that space. We've come to love those animals in that space. We, we cherish the trees that are behind us because they house a significant natural resource of animals for us. So when we talk about tearing trees down, when we talk about construction, when we talk about noise, it's just a, with eleven houses in that, in that area, you know, development is probably inevitable, you know? You've all been by that, that property and saw the old, original white farmhouse that was in, you know, our family, my father-in-law's family, and mother-in-law's family for a century. And that, that house, you know, was, and it's going to be torn down. I mean, that's, that's a fact. But, when we look at the traffic patterns of East River Road, when my father-in-law was, you know, a hundred yard, less than a hundred yards from our house, and for us to drive to his house, we had to go up Ninetieth, up East River Road, make a U-turn, and come back. And when he would be coming southbound, or when we had to drive southbound, everything was, everything's a U-turn. We had to go up to what's now the west, the westbound entrance to six-ten, make a U-turn there and come down, and whenever, and when he wanted to go north, he had to go south and make a U-turn at Ninetieth Avenue and East River Road. Now we're adding a significant number of new vehicles to that traffic pattern. It was mentioned that we have a lot, we have a lot of foot traffic down Ninetieth Avenue now, you know, relative to Adams School. And, you know, if that increases, it's gonna make it more dangerous all the way around. Because we have, you know, right now, it's, it's a difficult scenario for me to understand, you know, eleven houses in that space, foot traffic, additional car traffic, and the new construction, the noise, it just seems like the, all of that coming together is not the best option for that space. Fewer houses, again, development is probably inevitable. We know that that property to be habitable, you know, the farm, the old farmhouse wasn't going to be brought up to code. It was, that just wasn't gonna happen. But, eleven houses, you're gonna squeeze in there, and I, I agree, Mr. Harstead, you, you build beautiful houses. They do.
Hey, please wrap up, wrap it up.
So I just, I just encourage you to reconsider the number of houses, and this, and the space, and the noise, and the traffic that that's gonna generate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Come to the microphone, please.
Can I defend it? You can defend now?
Sure.
He does, yes. Thank you. I'll get closer, can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Peggy Spurgeon, and Ellen was my father. That property belonged to my great-grandparents from around nineteen-ten. Sorry, my voice is really weak. But the land has been, I've got an abstract back to eighteen-fifty-eight for that property, which was larger, and then the land for my great-grandparents, over time, the school district took some in public condemnation, East River Road took more and more in public condemnation, so the land, which was large, NSP took property from, at that point, my great-uncle. So over time, the property that we ended up with, which was five acres, until East River Road was widened the last time, has shrunk. And we do appreciate the animals there, and we understand that. I don't like the idea of having any kind of drainage, anything in our backyard, and it would be in our backyard, because our property butts up to my father's property, and we have a path we'd cut through, and after my mother died, we bought property, we bought the house there from our friends that had the house, so we could help take care of my dad. And we raised our kids there, and yes, the parents line up with their cars in front of our homes to pick up their kids from Adam's School, understandably so, and our kids walk through the pathway. I can understand not having another pathway at Harstead's road, at the end of that road, because it's, the, the staff can't really protect or monitor it, because it's backed by like, the running track. So where we are, there's a school door right there, there's staff right there, the kids are all playing, and there's people right there. But someone could easily get on to the, much easier get on to school property back that way, so I, I think that's a bad idea. And yes, the trees are gonna come down, and he's correct in describing the trees that are there. My dad had looked at developing this himself, we had talked about this years ago, and he had hired someone to draw plans for it, with the runoff not being at the southwest part, but all of it being on the northwest part, but with fewer homes on it, so there'd be three lots in the front with more space for drainage. And then with anywhere from six to seven homes instead of eleven, making the lots a little bit bigger with fewer homes, and again, space for an ample amount of homes instead of stacked homes, and I, and they do have nice homes, we've, we've looked at them. But what I don't, what don't wanna see is, like stacked up on Coon Rapids Boulevard, where you, there's back, 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 and then there's a lot of congestion or a lot of, not families in yards, but I just would have to have a, you know, on our levels, everyone pretty much has a deck that's more or less the same height, some off the ground, some a little bit higher, but if you have a two-story home and you have a deck on the second floor, then, you know, everyone's looking down on our property, and we lose that privacy. It depends on how the homes are developed and how they're built. So it's gonna change the landscape, don't like the idea of any, any water coming towards our properties, it would affect a whole, whole line of them. So, I'm, I'm glad that single-family homes can be built there. I just would like caution to be used, and I think fewer homes, you know, eight homes, better than eleven homes. But I, I just don't like that drainage, it's that, whatever he calls it, in our, and it's in our backyard.
All right.
Thank the, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing. Anyone else wish to speak? Final call. We'll close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Just a couple of questions for the planners. One, first question, as far as the density requirements, LDR one and LDR two have the exact same density designations within the city, correct?
That's correct, they only have different lot width and area requirements.
So it's the dimensional requirements of the lot that is the difference between the two, otherwise they are exactly the same?
Correct.
Okay. With respect to the adjacent zonings, the Ninetieth and then across the way, looks like kinda Norway, and on East River Road, are those LDR one or LDR two?
Let me take a look real quick and see if I can find out exactly which lots you're talking about.
So the property's directly basically south and east?
Maybe go quick and verify. So, are you talking about along?
The southern property line and the eastern property line. Knowing that it's East River Road, but across, across the way there.
Across the way, oh, those are LDR two, across East River Road.
And to the south is LDR two as well, correct?
To the south, along Norway Street is MDR.
On Ninetieth there, that's LDR two.
That's LDR two, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So essentially, excuse me.
Commissioner Casey.
So essentially, if we looked at a zoning map, we're gonna see LDR two, kind of across the board there. I didn't see a zoning map in our packet, but...
Apologies, I'll, I'll bring it up on the screen there, so you can see where some of the LDR one, it's pretty patchwork.
Okay.
I should add that on the presentation. I meant to include it in the packet, I apologize if I didn't do that.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Patzner, LDR one, because of the depth of the lots, how many lots would fit on that property, approximately?
To, to be honest, I don't remember, I think five or six. It would, it would have to be on only one side of a street, essentially. So if I remember right, I think the street would be on the south edge of the property, and the lots would come north from those, but I, I, there was a proposal submitted early on that I, I didn't look super closely at, so I don't remember all the details. Or a concept, I apologize, not a proposal.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, if I, if I may, with the picture up here, yellow is LDR one, the tan gray is LDR two.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may, one more question.
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, Mr. Patzner, I guess, a little, little question here on this first procedurally, because both, both items are before us today, if we don't rezone this, the plat will not work, correct?
Correct.
Because the plats would not be there.
The plat is dependent on the rezoning.
Right, so we don't have that a condition down here, and the rezoning has to go through the city council as well. Does it behoove us to split these apart? Because if the zoning doesn't get approved, then the plat needs to be reworked.
Correct.
Not that I wanna delay another thing tonight, but...
If I may, I, I don't think that there is any advantage to splitting them apart. I think that it, the, both the planning commission and the city council have the ability to recommend approval or denial of either, so if the city council votes to deny the rezoning, then their finding of fact for denying the preliminary plat is that it doesn't meet the LDR one zoning, so it's a pretty easy, single statement that they could make, so it probably wouldn't necessarily be advantageous to split them up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Patzner, essentially, the city is responsible for this maintenance of the cul-de-sac road that will be in the neighborhood, and, and then for the drainage, too, for the snow plowing, for that kinda thing, there'll be, it'll be a city street.
Correct, yeah. That, it was city street, city maintained ponds, yeah, the city would plow the street. This is, I think, generally the city's standard for single-family developments, as opposed to multifamily developments where many of the streets are private and maintained by AJOAs.
Like the other side of East River Road, those are private, private streets. So what was my, the engineering comments have to address this drainage. If it's gonna fall in the lap of the city, it's gonna have to be addressed by the, by the city, it's not a...
Correct.
And the developer, I suppose.
If, if I may respond to that, the engineering department and the, and the applicant have been working together on getting those addressed. The indication that I have from the engineering department is that it's reasonably safe, I guess, for the applicant to bring this forward, as is, based on the engineering comments, the potential changes to the lot would not be significant enough that they would recommend that the applicant withdraw. However, I am unfortunately unable to speak to any of the specifics of the conversation being had between the engineering department and the applicant, so that's just sort of the assurance that I have gotten at this point.
From the engineers?
From the engineers.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner, your concerns, or anyone wish to make a motion one way or another?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner No.
I'd recommend in planning case twenty-four dash ten, that we approve the proposed rezoning based on the findings, and in case twenty-four eleven, recommend approval of the preliminary plat based on the conditions as enumerated.
I'll second that.
Motion by No, second by Knoblock, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, closed. And that motion carries. This is, on planning case ten and eleven, this is an introduction, or it's, will be an introduction to the city council. And, on twenty-four dash ten, on nine, or July ninth, and a decision by the city council, excuse me, it'll be introduced by the city council for the rezoning, and decision on the preliminary plat at the July ninth meeting by the city council, and a decision on the rezoning would be by the city council at the July twenty-third meeting. be by the city council at the July 23rd meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Just a clarification, Mr. Patzner, if the introduction of the zoning on the 9th, and then the decision on the zoning would happen on the 23rd, then they wouldn't be able to decide on the plat until the 23rd, then, correct?
Thank you, that's correct. That was an oversight on my part when I wrote that. Yeah, the plat would have to be done, the decision on the plat would have to be done at the same meeting as the decision on the zoning, not the introduction on the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the correction. And those can be appealed as, within 10 days if someone so chooses. All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Patzner.
So really, really quick, just want to go over the three items that we have in for the July meeting, aside from the ones that have been tabled to the July meeting, which, so that does the, three of the four items tonight, so it'll be six items on the July meeting. One of them is a request submitted by the city for, in, 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 joint with the owner of the wireless tower. The city is planning to remove the water tower at 11316 Foley Boulevard. There are currently wireless antennas on top of that water tower that need to be maintained in order to maintain service, wireless service. So the wireless company is going to request to build a temporary antenna for the interim while the water tower is being removed, and then build a permanent antenna that's the same size and specs as the temporary antenna once the water tower has been removed. So the proposal would essentially replace the water tower with a wireless antenna of the same height. So the, the overall height of the structure would not change. It would just go from being a water tower with antenna on it to an antenna itself. So that's something that the public works department and the owner of the wireless antenna have been working on together, and that will be on the July meeting. A church that would like to have operations on the second story of 2393 Coon Rapids Boulevard are requesting a CUP. The church is a conditional use in the general commercial district, so a CUP is required. This one's relatively straightforward. And then the opposite of straightforward, an applicant, or the owner of the Wedgewood Villas at 10303 Hanson Boulevard would like to turn their pool house into a, another unit, so add essentially one unit to this multifamily building. The approvals were for a planned unit development, so the zoning for this parcel is essentially PUD. They need to get that PUD amended to add the extra unit and also add two parking spaces to the site. So they've submitted plans that generally meet city code requirements and existing PUD requirements to do that. But they would need planning commission recommendation and council approval to amend that PUD. So those are the three items, other than what's being tabled for the next meeting, and that's all I have for you. Thanks.
Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
It is adjourned.